Good evening, everybody. I want to call the this meeting of the Wellington Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Today is June 21st. It is 7:31 PM and the meeting is starting. For a roll call, we have myself, John Tien, Vice Chair, we have Becky Sinofsky, Andy Marco, and Bob Shabbin. I don't see any other members right now, but four members is enough for a quorum. So we will get the meeting started with those four members. Okay, item, item C, just to be received. Mike, do we have any applications to receive?
Oh, nothing new.
Could I please ask everybody on the meeting to mute? Thank you. Nothing to be received, Mike?
No.
Okay, item D then, public hearing. PZ dash 22 dash 10, zone change. Do we have the representatives for this application?
Mr. Vice Chair of the Commission, good evening. My name is Tom Cody. I'm a firm of Robinson and Cole. Our office is located in Hartford at 280 Trumbull Street. And I am here representing the applicant NHG Acquisition LLC. Mr. Nate Kirschner with it is also on the phone as well. And and Mr. and members of the Commission, what we wanted to do briefly here is to request a continuation of the of the start of the hearing. Learned this morning that there was unfortunately a typographical error in the text of the notice signs that were posted at this. We didn't realize it. But the the website address for the was incorrect. It's our fault. I apologize for that. So with that, we really would need to ask you to continue the hearing that we can do that notice over again and do it correctly. Have two meetings in July. The first is the fifth. What to suggest that the Commission consider continuing this of this hearing to the 19th of July, which is your second meeting? Reason for that is that we expect to meeting with the Economic Development Commission on the 13th of June. And at that time, we wanted to make a presentation to the EDC and members of the public that that would attend and to just share with them information about the applicant. We thought that would be a good opportunity to get some additional action out about this. And if you agree, that it might make sense to the public hearing on the 19th after we've had that opportunity to the EDC. So I've I've sent a letter to Mike Damato this evening formalizing the request. And we did include a consent to an extension of time for the statutory time for you to to continue it out to the 19th if you so choose to do that. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them for you.
Okay, I don't see any real problem with that. Mike, do we need a motion at this time to continue to the 19th?
Yes.
Can I get a motion from somebody on the committee?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Andy?
Yes, aye, sorry.
All opposed? All right, motion carries. Mr. Cody, you're you're on for the 19th of July.
Thank you so much. I apologize for the inconvenience, but we do look forward to meeting with you on the 19th.
Okay, as you can see, there's some big public interest in what you're doing. There's a lot of people on the on the call tonight. So absolutely, we're looking forward to learning some more.
Great, and we as well. So we're to it and we'll see you on the 19th. And again, we'll be meeting with the EDC, we expect on the 13th of July.
Okay.
Okay. Good night.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to PZ 22 dash nine text amendment pertaining to the regulation of cannabis. Mike, what do we got?
So we'd been dealing with the changes to the statute surrounding cannabis and the legalization of cannabis. For a number of months, we've been workshopping these changes and sorry, hold on, I'm getting feedback. I don't want to screw up the recording. Let me try to plug into a headset here. So we've been, the Commission's been workshopping changes to the zoning regulations to deal with cannabis establishments. We've gone through a number of iterations of the regs based upon comments, feedback and various reviews. We had a, at the last meeting, we sort of went through as as a group and we looked at what was being proposed and we took some public comment. And so the the version that is currently in the sort of the packet or linked on the agenda, public documents reflects those changes and the things that we discussed, including changes to the separating distances, et cetera. Since since the package went out and the agenda was published, we've had some other some, I guess developments or things that we've learned. And I did send this to review by counsel. So so we did get Helen Sage to review it. There were some question about whether or not it made sense to do the section 3.4, which is concentration of uses, whether it made sense to keep the language that was originally in the state statute or not. The the way that the language was left in in the in the statute, in the in the bill or the act basically kept the language about density and total number of uses intact. And so the original approach in sort of the municipal community, a lot of people dealing with this and writing regs was that that was left there. And so we could sorry, I just want to stop for a second. There's all some people that are using the chat. This is, it's not part of what we record and it's really not meant to be used for that. So if you could refrain from from typing comments into the chat, that would be great. The Commission doesn't see it and we don't have any way to capture it. Okay. So basically what I did this afternoon is I went through and I I made changes again, which I'll bring up and share on my screen to move away from this concentration of uses. The concern here was that under some of the statutory requirements, even though the legislature had left the language in that it would be there would be some potential exposure. And the legal community, if you will, the land use attorneys that have talked about this and looked into this are split on whether or not it's something that should or shouldn't be in there. So what what I did was I prepared provisions essentially to create large separating distances for these uses so that they can't be in close proximity to a similar use, which will effectively cap based upon the fact that where our zones are and the number of establishments and properties that we have. You know, we're not going to have the ability to really see that many of these establishments when you start looking at these separating distances. So let me share my screen. And we can go through. So can you see this?
It's still loading.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
It's it's large enough.
Mm hmm.
Okay. So again, this, the stuff shown in red is additions. The stuff shown in red strike through is stuff that we are proposing to remove based upon the last discussion. So and any comments that we received. So I'll go through the red quickly. Number one, we're making this change to call this 11.25. We're clarifying these terms here as what is what is outlined and defined within the public act. There were some questions about what was applicable and how to determine use of terms and what certain things meant. So I've added this and defined, but also as amended so that should anything change down the road, we've got a little bit more coverage. The other thing that has sort of been expanded on a little bit more recently is that for both delivery service and transporter, those are not uses which are subject to zoning. Somebody who is in their vehicle making a delivery to a person with a a medical license to use cannabis, for example, or someone who orders it lawfully, the town cannot prohibit that as a as a use. And so because of that, both delivery and transporter are proposed to be removed from here. And subsequently, you'll see that's coming out of the use table. I've also, we've tweaked the use table to just call them special permits rather than special use permits. And I've expanded this to make it clear that these this applies to a retail, hybrid retail or dispensary facility. This section is is what I was referring to. This gets into the separating distances. At the last meeting, we talked about the separating distances for child daycare facilities and other similar uses and mirroring the language related to how separating distances are written for for liquor. So that language in the format is written here, but I've added the the 1,000 foot separating distance between another cannabis establishment. And this is how we will effectively deal with the density requirement. Because when you look at the fact that they're only allowed in the DI in the DC zone, if you add a 1,000 foot buffer, we are going to significantly reduce the the areas that that these can go and the only other thing that I'll mention, we can get back to this just so we can kind of go through it. I've changed signage so that it is in accordance with section 19, which is the current section for signage. So we're not carving that out separately. In cultivation, I I've qualified that cultivation must be conducted within a permanent building. And we've added here a 750 foot separating distance to any residential structure. And again, included the 1,000 foot separating distance for any other cannabis establishment. The specific conditional approval. Again, this is just language requiring them to continuously maintain all necessary approvals required by the state. And that is mostly related to not wanting to have a situation where you have someone who was in operation and doesn't have state approval and and the town potentially having another person wanting to come in and operate and being in this sort of catch 22 between both having approved one and potentially having another one seeking to locate within that 1,000 foot buffer. So we're we're basically holding the operators to the requirement that they maintain all licensing. And if they don't obtain the state license, they they essentially can't finalize their local approval. So those are the changes. I'll go back here and if anybody has questions, any members of the Commission, I can kind of go through that.
I think it looks good to me, Mike. I think you addressed all of our concerns that we had last time. Does anyone else on the Commission want to weigh in on this?
I I would just ask, Mike, have, are you going to run this corrected? Updated reg passed the land use attorney?
I certainly can. The changes were were reflective of their comments. So this is they they had, they had said, you know, we've now learned, you know, that we really don't want to regulate these to use as as part of the zoning regulation, which is why we pulled those two front pieces out. And we sort of talked at length regarding separating distances and how that whole section applied. So these are largely reflective of the those conversations.
Okay, I I that was my question. If this is a reaction to their land use attorney on reviewing the regs that we had presented?
Yeah, it's it's largely based on that. And then as the planning community learns about how these uses and things are evolving, you know, we're sort of trying to dial in. So it's it's all reflective of that. And then the comments that we had at the last meeting from both the public and you guys.
Right. Thank you.
Any other Commission members want to weigh in? Mike, do we open this to public comment at this time?
Uh, yes. And and I think if I could just indulge for another 30 seconds, since we do have a much larger audience than than typical, the the thumbnail version of this is that earlier this year, the the last legislative session, I mean, as many people know, the state passed laws which basically tell towns that unless the town adopt regulations for how to deal with cannabis or or townwide prohibition, they must be treated as similar uses. And so that would mean a retail use would be treated similar to a Dollar General or other retail that we have in town. And cultivation would be treated like a similar manufacturing use. So the purpose of creating these regulations is to set standards for how we will deal with this so that our current regulations don't basically come into effect as a default. So that's what sort of prompted this. But yeah, we will open it up to the public.
So we'll open this up for public comment. Please raise your hand if you'd like to make comments on the on PC 22 dash nine. We'll go with Patrick Lord first.
Good evening, Commission. Can you please clarify and I don't, I don't know, either state the regulation or the reasoning in that there's no business that can be conducted here, nor can any comments be made about any items on the agenda? Is that part of the planning and zoning regulations or?
Yeah, I think you're talking about the public comment section of our of our meeting agenda?
Yes.
Yeah, we're not at that right now. We're in a public hearing. Item D on our agenda. Sub item B. Talking about the text amendment for cannabis regulations. That's that's what we're here about. And if you have questions about that, you're welcome to talk about it now. Later on during public comment, we won't welcome questions on PC 22 dash nine because we're discussing it now.
Okay, so I think there was some confusion. I was just talking with some folks in town and you know, when the 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 first hearing came up for the the zone change, you know, folks were I don't know, not not really like.
Right, right. We can't talk about this. We we need to talk right now about PZ 22 dash nine. If you have something to say about the cannabis regulations, that's what we're discussing. So we have to ask you to stick to the topic, please.
Thank you.
Okay, Donna, I guess would be next.
Yes, I'm Donna 77 Common Road. Um, I'm a little concerned about being 500 feet from a school or a childcare facility for a store that sells this stuff. Um, that's not very far. Even driving down the highway where I've ended up behind people that are smoking quite a bit of the cannabis. The fumes are nauseating, overpowering. So no child should have to endure that. So I respectfully request that the 500 feet be increased to whatever the maximum would be could could be allowable. And 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 also that the 1,000 feet is also not significant between businesses of the same type and that that should be increased to whatever the maximum allowable would be. Thank you very much.
If I could dispel one, what I think might be a misconception here, Donna. The regs also state that nobody may consume cannabis on the premises of a cannabis retailer. So it's not like people will be, you know, inundated by by a smoke show because they happen to be nearby a retailer. That that's against the regulations. They cannot consume on site.
But they also aren't allowed to consume while driving and that is not stopping them. So you're not allowed to drive while under the influence and
Right, but if people if people are consuming cannabis on on site with a retailer, that retailer will lose his license and the retailer wants to protect his license. So he will stop people from consuming on site. I'm sure of that. I'll let Mike speak to the to the setbacks. That is an adjustment. We actually increased them dramatically since our last iteration of this reg. Mike, if you could please speak to those setbacks.
Yeah, so this was doubled. We started at 250 and didn't have separating distances for the cultivation and production. And so, you know, there is no maximum and there is no statutory maximum. But the key, the key which has gotten us to a point where we've moved away from the cap locally is that based upon eight dash two and the uniform and uniformity standard, which is essentially what we're writing these two. We have to be able to show that it can go somewhere. We can't say that it's an allowed use and then have all kinds of criteria which make it impossible for them to go somewhere. So we're allowing them in those zones and we're creating a separating distance between like uses so that we can limit essentially the density. But but the fact of the matter is, we can still point to a place on a map where the regs will allow them, which is what statute requires.
Thank you.
The only other thing that I would mention is if you see on the application requirements, we are we are requiring that they provide an odor monitoring mitigation plan to demonstrate that odors and fumes will be substantially removed from the air. So this is all part of the special permit process if these regulations were to be approved. So the Commission would have the flexibility to ask them for information related to how they're going to mitigate these things, what they're going to use inside the building to deal with security, et cetera. So these are all things that they would have to demonstrate to the Commission. And if the Commission felt that that their answers were not satisfactory or that they weren't effectively addressing those concerns, the Commission could deny that application.
I see Rebecca Handen has her hand up.
Hi, yes. Based on what I'm hearing, you guys have already looked at the town maps. Do you know how many establishments would be allowed in the town based on these new regulations?
I gotta let Mike speak to that. He's the one who just redid the
Sure.
So the the tricky part is when we're separating, creating separating distances between like uses, we we don't know where the first one will necessarily go. So it creating that bubble is a little bit hard. But if you give me a couple of minutes, perhaps while some other people speak, I'll try to put together a quick buffer map just to give you a sense of what the scale would look like. And and I can probably show that. So give me a couple of minutes. I'll take a shot.
Okay, I see Nicole has her hand up as well.
Yes, actually, I have one of the similar same questions as far as how many would be allowed, but also a question, is there a, oh, sorry, 23 Lucerne Drive, Wellington. Is there a difference between a dispensary and growing? Is is that been as far as the distance between public areas, schools, library?
Um, is there, I'm sorry, is there, are you saying the cultivator?
Correct. With, is there a difference between the two as far as what will be allowed where and within what zones?
Again, I'd have to let Mike speak to that, but my understanding of how this works is that there's a minimum of 1,000 feet between like businesses. We have three class, we have three businesses are identified in the recs, retail or hybrid retailer, dispensary and a cultivator. Perhaps it was four or maybe I'm just speaking. Hold on. While I pull up the reg again. We have retailer, hybrid retailer, dispensary facility. Those are cannabis, essentially areas that cannabis will be for sale. And we also have cultivator. We also have micro cultivator.
Okay, is there a is there a an amount of land that is a minimum or a maximum for a cultivator?
Don't think I've seen anything like that in our regs, right, Mike? Nothing defining.
So we would, so first, the cultivator, anything, any any cultivator, you know, like a large scale industrial grow facility, for example, would not be allowed in the in the design commercial zone. It would only be allowed in the in the designed industrial zone. And so the area in down by Phelps Plaza, for example, you could not have a cultivation facility in that plaza or in Dollar General or where Dunkin' Donuts is. That is, that is the the DC zone. So we are regulating the uses a little bit differently based upon that. I don't know if there was a second part to that question that I missed. Oh, lot size. So because the retail facilities are, in many cases, are very small and cultivation or micro cultivation can be up to 15,000 and larger. We're not looking at lot size. They would have to meet, if they're building a facility, they would have to meet all of the setback requirements to put up a building that are in place today. But we're not saying that a a based upon the use, the parcel needs to meet certain criteria for size, if that makes sense.
Where in town are these zones?
Mike is working on a map to be able to show us that.
Okay, all right, perfect. Thank you.
And Nicole, also, from what I understand, cultivator licenses are few and far between in Connecticut and they're virtually all spoken for already. It's highly unlikely that a cannabis cultivator is going to move into town.
All right, thank you.
Ralph, it looks like you've got your hand up. How you doing?
I do. I hope you can hear me.
Yeah.
Okay, I I think one thing that is missing out of
Please introduce yourself to the
I'm sorry, Ralph, 47 Village Hill Road. One thing that's missing from the response to Nicole's question is the fact that the number of facilities is limited by the town population by statute, right?
Not anymore. No, that came out of the statute.
Completely out. So we could have multiple. I thought it was one for 25,000.
So No, they took it out of the statute.
The statute was amended, the bill was amended on May 24th to remove the density, which is why we tried to bring it in and add it to the local regs. But that that portion of that paragraph in the bill was completely deleted.
All right, my mistake. Anything else, Ralph? Katie or Kathy, sorry.
Hi, good evening. Kathy Demers, 48 Mason Road, Wellington. Hi. I just want to clarify. According to the state statute, are towns allowed to totally disallow any type of cannabis establishments? Are planning and zoning commissions allowed to write the write the regs to say that we don't allow any cannabis establishments?
My understanding is that that would require an ordinance from the from the town, not through planning and zoning.
You can, we can prohibit the use here, but we can't prohibit some of the other stuff related to the transports, the deliveries, consumption, possession, all of those things. We can, we can regulate the use and we can say that it's deemed to be a prohibited use, but we won't. We cannot prohibit through zoning some of those other things. That has to be by ordinance.
Again, can I understand this to mean that if planning and zoning decided that they did not want to allow any establishments such as retail or a cultivator, that that's within planning and zoning's ability to do if they decided that people in town wanted that, or that was something that they wanted to do, that that would be allowed. It's it's not ordinance, which I understood to mean you can't with the ordinance, you can't, you could stop public use in public spaces. Where this is different, this is talking about establishments and what planning and zoning has the the ability to regulate. Is that correct, Mike?
Yes, with the with the caveat of the deliveries and transporters, which we cannot regulate here.
Thank you.
Okay, does any other member of the public want to speak? Any other members of the public want to speak? Oh, Nicholas. Hi, Nicholas.
Hi, it's Nicola at 49 Myrtle. I was just looking at some stats and just out of curiosity. Has the board taken consideration any cost to law enforcement for crimes that happen? I saw Denver saw 17%. Robbs in Washington has been having issues. So what are the town would that cost us?
I don't think that there's really been a study done along those lines. Mike, we haven't looked into any increase in crime, have we?
No, you know, I'm not sure exactly how we do that since we don't have a local police department, though if we got to a point where we were approving a specific, let's say, a retail location, and there was concerns about, you know, when the facility initially opened related to traffic or other things. The bill does allow for specific arrangements to be made between the municipality and the operator for some of those types of expenses in that initial opening. So if that became a concern, I think there's some flexibility in in that type of arrangement if it were to come up.
Is there a way that we could be proactive and kind of maybe potentially forecast that?
The tricky part would be tying that to a uniform standard across town. Because certain establishments based upon size, location and operational standards, whatever, or or whether they're selling or growing may demand different things. And so from the planning and zoning commission's perspective, they would need to adopt a language that was uniform and applied to all users in the same way. But the these are special permits. So in the review of the specific establishments, if there were certain conditions that they felt needed to be as imposed upon the application as a condition of approval, they could do that at that phase, depending on what it was. But at this level, it has to be completely uniform.
Thank you.
I see Joan Taraszkowicz has her hand up. Hi, Joan.
Okay, now that
You're muted.
Yeah, you know, listening to Kathy, I began to wonder
Joan, Joan, please give your name and address for
That's what I have, Joanne Taraszkowicz at 15 Liston Road. Okay. I got to wondering, what has been done to sort of query around the town and find out if anybody wants this here in the first place? You know, this is these, there are some things coming up that are really dramatic changes. And some, I'm not sure exactly how we do it, but the discussion needs to be. What do we want the town to be? Do we want a town that has this or not? Arguments
The reason for the regs, Joan, is because if we didn't take action, then people could come in and just put in a shop wherever they want.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, I understand that. I understand. I'm not questioning that, John. What I'm saying is that we need to do find out if the town wants it. If you have the regs in and then you find out that most of the people in town are not really K's crazy about this, let them look to Stafford to get their, you know, grass if they want to. Then can we turn down an application just because the town decided they don't want to? That might put us in a bind. And what kind of places do we want to bring into the town? I guess there's a lot of discussion that should take place here before we bring anything in. But I don't, I don't know why we're bringing this in without making sure that this is something we want. Okay. Just just to add another layer of problems to the situation, you understand. Okay, but thank you.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Does anyone else on the call wish to speak at this time? Any member of the public? Donna?
I was just wondering if Michael had had a chance to get the map ready. It would make it a lot easier to have an intelligent conversation if we knew about where locations would be allowed, even if they're not feasible.
Yeah, so I I had some luck. Let me see if I can. I'm a little bit limited in how I can show this, but I'm gonna hopefully we can make this work. Okay. So what I did was, just because I think it's it's a a point of reference that people know. I I took the Dunkin' Donuts property and I put a 1,000 foot buffer. So 1,000 foot ring around that piece of property. So what you're seeing now, hopefully, is the Dunkin' Donuts parcel, which is in red, and then a 1,000 foot buffer. So if if an establishment went there, another establishment could not be located within the 1,000 feet. The other thing that hopefully you can see, but I can't do much to make easier is under underneath, you'll see these dark, this dark area, and this is the commercial zone within this portion of town. So even though, you know, over on the right, you'll see parcels which are which are yellow, those are residentially zoned, towns are 80 zone. So even though they're without, they're outside of the 1,000 foot buffer, they do not meet the zone requirements. So that that gives you a sense of kind of where, just if one were to locate, the other thing that I can try to do is just show you, generally speaking, the town zoning map overall. Is this changing for you guys? Can you see the town zoning?
Yes, it is. Yeah.
Okay.
Looks good.
So anything that you see in yellow is not subject to the location of a cannabis establishment. The only areas that are eligible for sighting and then they need to meet the criteria of separating distances between church, daycare, the thousand feet for another cannabis facility, etc. Are these areas shown in sort of this light red, if you will, with these are the design commercial zone and then purple. So if we look up here, this is the industrial zone, and these are the areas along FedEx and TA. Just to give you a kind of an example of what we're looking at now. So I don't know if that helps at all. It's a little sort of doing math on the fly, but that's that's kind of how the sighting would work if they were seeking to locate. But it would still require a public hearing and special permit, no matter where they went.
Donna, was that helpful?
It was, and it provides some additional information. So the light red or the purple would be okay if they met the other criteria. So if we're talking about changing a zone that's currently residential to something else, we need to be well aware that what we might be inviting in is a very large cannabis operation. Or the opportunity for several being 1,000 feet apart into town. So thank you very much.
Okay. I did see somebody with their hand up, but it looks like they took their hand down. Any other member of the public wish to comment at this time? Jessica?
Yes, hi, Jessica Uzamblow, 25 Wilderness Way. I guess my question would be kind of what Donna was saying is, at what point then would a person who's looking to put in a cannabis dispensary or something? Do they have the option of doing a rezone so they could rezone a residential area to a commercial area where they could then potentially put something in?
Well, they would have to come before the planning and zoning commission to get that rezone approved. Correct, Mike?
Right, so that and they would have to seek a change in zone from R80 to DC or DI. So the town has other zones that are on this map, the other colors. So they would have, they would have to seek a zone change to one of those particular zones based upon whatever type of establishment they were seeking. So it it, there would be multiple steps and multiple public hearings and you know, the like.
Correct. So I guess my question too is, and I know we're not supposed to say anything, but and I'm not going to speak to it, but I know we were supposed to have a discussion about the other zone change, which did not happen. But to my knowledge, there's no reason why anybody can't bring something and request a zone change. And if they fill out all the right paperwork, then that can happen. So just because we see, you know, this is the only area that's zoned for commercial or, you know, industrial or whatever, doesn't mean that that can't change if they do all the right things. Just like this other place, if they do all the right things, there's no reason why planning and zoning can't say, no, you can't do this.
I'd have to defer to Mike again on this, sorry.
So so, yeah, I mean, obviously not going to get into any other applications, but what I would state is that the other application is seeking a change to the SDZ. There's a specific zone. It's a special development district. They have stated the purpose for the change. And that is within the application. They're not seeking to go to a DC or DI. Cannabis establishments are listed as being allowed in the DC or the DI. The SDZ is not mentioned in the current language for the cannabis establishment, so there's no overlap between those two applications.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
I see Melissa Miller has her hand up.
55 Mahaliak Road in Wellington. Just curious, is that map available on the P and Z website by any chance? Or is there a way to get access to it? Because, I mean, I didn't really have a real great look at it, and I'd like to kind of I mean, I've been to a lot of as we know, we've been to a lot of these meetings and, you know, I have a new truck stop going in right down the street from my house because of a zoning change that was, you know, at one point residential, and they changed it to commercial. So I mean, you know, to kind of say that that probably wouldn't happen or, you know, I mean, I understand. But, you know, our town is turning into a city. And it's actually not really pleasant to live here. It really isn't anymore. And it's kind of sad because you know, I mean, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of, you know, state my feelings about this because I moved out to the country for quiet. And, you know, a lot of what the other gentleman was saying about studies about crime, increased crime and things like that. We don't have a police department, and we all know that the response time for the state police isn't so great either. So I mean, it's a, it's a big concern. And I know this is just about the zoning, but is that map available? I'm not going to state too much more.
If you're looking for the zoning map, I think all you need to do is do a Google search. If you search GIS map, Wellington, Connecticut, it'll pop up that map for you, and then you then you want to check off the zoning overlay. On the left hand side, there's a menu. You check off zoning overlay, you'll see that.
Okay. No, it's just, it's very concerning to me, you know. I mean, I don't even know what the, I don't even know what the impact is really going to be, you know, in on traffic and crime in this neighborhood now, you know, considering that it's, you know, right down the street from my house. And then we add more things, you know, like this, a dispensary, anything like that. I mean, it's going to just encourage more and more traffic, and it's not going to encourage the right traffic. That's it.
Thank you for your comments. Any other member of the public wish to speak at this time? Samantha Sperry?
Hi, Samantha Sperry, 73 Lucerne Road. I apologize if you already answered this question, but I'm fairly new to attending meetings. So I just wanted to clarify in a way that I could understand. So if like some of the other townspeople were saying, if an applicant requests a zoning change by filling out an application or whatever and bringing it to you guys, is it just voted on? Is that something that's voted on from your board? Or is that brought to a public hearing? Or can you please explain how that process works a little bit? In simple terms?
Absolutely, a zoning change would go to a public hearing, just like we had a public hearing. We're having a public hearing right now on the cannabis. We had a public hearing on the other application, but they opted for a continuance. But yeah, any zone change would come to a public hearing just like this. I believe butters also have to be notified of a zone change. Am I correct, Mike?
Yes.
Yeah, so any any property owners that are that are going to be direct neighbors to a district that's going to get rezoned by some zoning change, they'll be notified and have ample opportunity to come to a meeting like this and voice their concerns or objections.
Um, yeah, I understand that, sir, but I guess I'm wondering is is there a vote to approve that zoning change and who votes on that? Besides, just like bringing it to a public hearing where people talk about it, like this isn't an actual vote, like some people say. Yeah, it's okay, because it's going to hopefully keep our taxes from going up, which is also a problem that people are concerned about. But in order to keep taxes low, you need additional revenue, obviously, and there has been a decrease in population. But anyways, yeah, I guess I'm just wondering, is there a vote on that from you or the townspeople besides a public hearing?
It would certainly be a vote of the planning and zoning commission to approve any zoning changes. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I thought I saw somebody else's hand up, but it may have And I thought I saw somebody else's hand up, but it may have been pulled down. Any other member of the public wish to speak at this time? Going once. Oh, Jennifer. Hi, Jennifer.
Hi, Jennifer Sutton, twenty-eight Wilderness Way. Um I just wanted to state that um I am echoing what the lady before said about having another retail place up near us. Um with the truck stops being, you know, zoned for that, us being zoned now with Loves, we have FedEx. Um as it is, it's bad enough that, you know, the TA is up there and truckers are leaving bottles of pee on the side of our road and um to bring in a cannabis shop that we are zoned right next to, I I don't feel is great to have for us. Um I would have never moved to the side of the town if I had known all this. Um it's, I'm hoping that this never gets voted in or the zones change because I feel this is unsatisfactory for a small town. That's it.
Well, uh uh again, Jennifer, the reason for the regs is that if we had taken no action, um then they would be able to move into town, uh just like Dollar General wanted to move into town. So it's important, it's important to us to take these actions to 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 finalize some regulations and so that we have some control.
Um I understand that and I appreciate you guys doing that. I just hope when it comes down to it that the town's allowed to vote on this and um you know, we think about all of us who are living on this side of the town that have to deal with FedEx trucks almost hitting us at stop signs and um traffic coming off the highway where we're almost getting hit to come to our own houses. Um the TA is an absolute nightmare. Um so I just hope that the town in the boarding, you guys think about us on this side of the town, too. Thank you.
Okay, uh just for the record, I live on this side of the town. Uh I live just off of Route three. I live just off of Route three twenty. I I don't notice FedEx trucks had, you know, almost hitting me or I I don't notice any of these problems.
Oh, well, you should come uh take a left onto Wilderness Way. And when you're at the three-way stop sign, I can't tell you how many times I've almost been hit. Sorry.
Okay, well.
Thank you.
Uh James Marshall has his hand up.
All right, thank you. Uh James Marshall, forty-six Fisher Hill Road. Um just a quick procedural question. I know we're talking about the cannabis facility, but wondering um does the public comment period allow you to answer questions related to the zoning regulation? Um or is that just a comment period only?
The public comment on the on the agenda section.
Yes.
That is for public comment, not related to anything that's on the agenda. So tonight, we are here with a public hearing on PC twenty-two dash nine discussing the cannabis regs. And this is an opportunity to.
Right, are you?
Yeah.
Sorry, not to interrupt. Sorry, the the virtual meeting format is a little awkward sometimes. Um are you guys able to provide comment and feedback and respond during the public comment period or is it just public comment?
It's just public comment and it's there specifically for items that are not on the agenda. If you, if you want us to give feedback on the cannabis regs, that's what we're doing right now.
I will wait till the public comment. Thank you.
Okay. As as long as when you get to the public comment, your comment can't be about the cannabis regs.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Nicole, I see your hand up. Nicole, you're still muted?
Sorry about that. It's Lottie Hackner, twenty-three Lucian Drive. It's my daughter's account. Um I actually want to second what Jennifer Sutton says. I live on Lucian Drive and uh coming down to go to the highway, I've almost been hit uh pretty badly um by a few trucks who are not driving correctly, but what I do want to say is if these regulations are changed as far as the zoning for for cannabis um in any shape or form, is there any studies done on what type of traffic is brought into these areas? As far as either foot traffic or motor vehicles? Uh and what type of problems they've caused in other towns? That would impact having something like this in our town?
I I don't know that there's been any studies done along those lines. Um we already have a sizable population of college kids uh in Wellington. Um and it would seem to me that that would, uh you know, we had a a guest at our last meeting who discussed bringing a cannabis establishment to our town. One of the reasons why uh he wanted to was the proximity to uh both Eastern and Yukon. And, you know, we've already got a a large population of college kids in town. I wouldn't expect that it's going to be that much different.
Okay, now this is just for a zoning change and this is something that you all designed on. So if an application comes through as something that the town would get to vote on? Or would you all get to vote on on that as well?
If somebody comes in and applies to build a cannabis establishment, the plant, planning and zoning commission uh votes on that. Am I correct, Mike?
Right. So this is, and this is um not a zone change. This is a text amendment to establish regulations. So there's, there's no, there's no zone change associated with this.
And so this is something that that we as um residents of the town have basically do not have any influence on if it's something that we do not want this to happen.
I'm not sure if there's a referendum process or anything like that. Um I'm I'm actually myself relatively new to Connecticut. I've lived here for two years. Uh I know that in Massachusetts, we had a referendum process, uh but I I don't know what's uh been done in the Connecticut act that that allows marijuana. Uh Mike, what's the uh, is there a referendum process or anything like that? Does the town have to approve?
For uh Wellington, the to adopt something like a a townwide prohibition to regulate consumption on, like I said, on town parks or or, you know, a an ordinance related to that, that would be something that would go to a town meeting, which would be voted on sort of generally by by any of the, I think the term would be electors. But for anything related to the Zone Planning and Zoning Commission, uses zoning regulations and zoning map, the, there is no formal way to integrate a referendum, um but the public input process is what's happening right now.
Okay. I I would.
Nicole, please. Okay, well, please remember that this, these regs are, we're we're implementing this because if we don't, um then anybody can come in and say, I want to put a cannabis establishment here and uh as long as they meet the conditions, we can't object. So, you know, that that's the reason for these regs.
Well, I guess, I guess in where we live in our area, we've just um as others have stated that we have seemed to be having um these, this large city growth in areas that really don't benefit the people who surround them. Trash and other miscellaneous things that I just, you know, I I think everybody knows what I'm talking about that happens over there and um I would just hope that our town doesn't um continue to grow in this particular manner. Um yes, I know that we need growth, but I don't believe that it it needs to happen this way. So, but that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Kathy Demers?
Uh Kathy Demers, forty-eight Mason Road. I understand that you need to do something to establish some type of regulation for cannabis. But again, I wondered if um, I mean, the statute does allow planning and zoning to establish regulations which state that it is not, that is prohibited to have cannabis establishments in town. If you were to do that and then a year or two from now after we kind of see how this all rolls out in Connecticut, if the planning and zoning commission wanted to go back and then write regulations to allow cannabis establishment, would that be allowed? Could they change their regulations a year or two down the road after kind of seeing how this rolls out for other towns? Thank you.
I think we could, Mike. I defer to you on that, but that's certainly something we could do.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you you can change the regulations. They're your regulations, so you can always enact changes or um members of the public can petition changes privately.
Okay, but again, I thought I think i- if we were to go that route and give it several years before we decide should we allow these or not, um it it could well be that several years from now, there is no licenses left in the state. People have snapped up all the licenses or uh there's competition to the point where it wouldn't be worthwhile for anybody to put a store in. We may miss the boat on some significant tax revenue, uh which would help the town. Um so I I I think that the regs that we have in front of us have have been something that we've um we've been working on for several months. Um and uh I think they're well thought out. That's my feeling on it. Um Kathy, are you all set? I guess so. Matthew Pelletier?
Hey, Matt Pelletier, fifty-four Latham Road. I have a question regarding um this. Um pending that it's a state regulation, what are the kind of federal regulations are we taking into consider of for this, seeing as how cannabis is still in legal substance based on a federal statute? Um I have a grave concern about um having a state law deviating from federal government, uh considering that it might impede our progress as a state, uh as a local community, considering we might have um local alphabet agencies come in and raid our town and shut it down pending um any change in administration or any uh federal administration thoughts on this. So what considerations has these policies taken into any kind of federal law, not just the state?
Uh I believe that these regs were written with our state act uh in mind and not with any federal policies. Does that answer your question, Matt?
Uh yes, and I I I find that uh very short-sighted, but thank you very much.
Donna Cook?
Donna Cook, seventy-seven Common Road. Um you specifically mentioned about the town losing revenue to, can besides personal property tax and real estate tax, do businesses pay any tax to the town of Wellington?
Do businesses, you mean, uh businesses generally like Dollar General or?
Right, they 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 pay, you know, whoever owns the property is paying the real estate tax based upon um the assessed value of the property in the building included. And then state of Connecticut has personal property tax, so businesses pay tax on their furniture and fixtures, you know, like their shelving, Dollar General be on their shelving um and and their fixed kind of stuff. So when you're concerned about losing tax revenue, if and I'm making this up, if a cannabis store would like to move into Phelps Plaza, it doesn't impact the real estate taxes because the assessed value doesn't change. The only thing that might, we might get would be the personal property tax, and that seems like a really low bar um to bring something like this into our community.
Now, we also, we also get three percent uh of retail sales. So uh an operation like this typically does uh between three and five million dollars worth of business in a year. Uh so you're looking at a a tax revenue of somewhere between ninety thousand and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
That that's, thank you. I appreciate that I was unaware of that. I still think that that's um a really low amount to bring something like this into our community.
Okay, well, uh thank you. Does any other member of the public wish to speak at this time? Uh Matthew, you still have your hand up?
Okay.
Sorry.
No worries, no worries. Anybody, any other member of the public wish to speak? Hi, Nick. Nick, you're still muted?
Oh, Nicole, can you hear me now? Yeah.
Yeah.
Westell, forty-nine Myrtle. Uh going back to the gentleman's uh statement about fed- federal um regulations and such. I know you said you haven't considered it, but I mean, can we?
For our purposes here, again, our purpose here with these regs is to make sure that we have some regs in place. That's what this is about. If this is not about uh an argument between uh the federal government and the state government uh over cannabis, i- it's about our ability to to regulate these businesses. Uh if we don't pass some form of regs, then they can move in and anywhere they want.
So with that being said, I mean, can we say, hey, you got one location and that's it in the whole town or do we have to have multiple spots?
Uh that comes back to the fact that we can't zone them out of town. Um and then the way that Mike has set up the um uh the which got the the uh boundaries, um it it will, it will limit them just de facto. It will limit the number of of uh facilities. Am I right, Mike?
Sorry, I lost the last part of that.
The the uh Nick Nick is asking if we can limit uh cannabis facilities to one in the town or something along those lines.
So the only, uh the only way to do that would be to expand the the buffering and the citing requirements so that there was really only one location that worked per the regs. The problem, when I was looking at this earlier today, the problem that we run into is the area that we have established for retail, right? We're talking about commercial zone. And then the area that that might be okay for an industrial facility are not the same areas in town. So Phelps Plaza, we can't just say we're going to allow it in Phelps because we wouldn't allow a cultivation industrial facility to go there. And so I, I don't know how I create that type of criteria. So, which is why we went with the separating distances, which which could, you could increase it. I mean, you could increase the separating distance from a thousand square feet or a thousand linear feet between like uses to three thousand. Um you know, there's certainly flexibility in that number. There just has to be some rationale to how we get there. If that makes sense.
It it does. And I have a question. Would would you be able to put that out to the town and say, see what the input is from the town?
I don't know if you want me to jump in, John. Um so
Uh yeah, please.
That that's, I mean, that's essentially what this is. This public hearing, the commission has had open for three or four meetings now. It was noticed in the paper. So the whole point of this 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 interaction right now is for them to understand what the perspective is of the town. So the Planning and Zoning Commission does not have a mechanism to essentially put it to a popular vote amongst everybody in town. But the public hearing process is precisely designed so that they can hear from you folks.
Thank you. And my rec, you know, I'd hope that it'd be at the maximum uh levels that could be to limit to only one.
Okay, thank you much. Uh thank you, Nick. Um Joan Teres was.
Uh Joan Teres with fifteen List Road. Um John, I guess I don't have a concept of these or something. My naivety or something. How big are they if they're going to put in millions of dollars a year? Yeah, I'm picking picturing like a package store or something like that. Am I being really naive about it or what?
Uh perhaps, I I I don't know. Um but yeah, they're typically this. That i- if you drive past any of the retail establishments that are uh in Massachusetts, there's the size of a typical package store.
And they do that.
There's one in Willimantic that's that's in a plaza with several other businesses, there's one. There was the one that was up on one ninety five. Yeah, they're they're not huge businesses by any means.
Okay, I just, I couldn't picture them when you're looking at all that money, must be a lot more popular than I ever. Oh, well, thank you.
And looks like Jessica has her hand up.
Yes, hi, um, Jessica is on low twenty five wilderness way again, um, I guess it's not just so much a question, maybe a comment, but. I kind of wanted to jump off of what some of my other, um. Members of town were saying about the truck stop and FedEx and whatnot. I know that there are at least two parcels of land. On this side of town near those. Places that are zoned commercial, I believe, I'm not completely positive, but I believe there's one right next to the TA. And then there's one that's down the road from loves, and I guess my main concern is. How do we? Kind of protect that area because I. Just personally, I see it as you put up a cannabis distribution place next to the. TA and to the FedEx, it doesn't seem very. Safe, in my opinion, especially being very next to the highway, like. Just with all of the traffic and everybody coming through, so. Again, like, I'm not sure if it was more of like a question, more of like a comment, just to put out there into space to say. That's a concern I have about my children. And where I live and my area is now on top of dealing with. FedEx and the two truck stops, now are we going to have to deal with? Cannabis distribution where I am very aware that the ones in Massachusetts on weekends, they need the police to regulate traffic. Because there are so many people. That are coming to the the center to get what they need or want, so now how is that going to affect? This area of town as well on top of everything else that we have.
I don't think that. That we took traffic into account. For these regs. Again, these regs are so that we can have some regs. That that's what this is about, absent these regs, nobody would be talking about traffic because they'd be saying, well. If you can put a package store there, I can put a pot shop there. So the purpose of these regs is to put something on the books that allows us to. Make sure that these that these businesses are established in an area where that's amenable to them, basically. Mike, do you, can you? Way in on that?
Yeah, so. So as far as the location, you know, the. Do you guess, just to your point, yeah, the purpose of the regs is is because absent them, they would have to be treated as. Absent a regulation, whether that be special permit allowed by right or complete. The town of the Planning and Zoning Commission prohibits the uses altogether without anything on the books, which is where we stand now. They have to be treated as similar uses, so if tomorrow Dollar General closed its doors, someone could open a cannabis retail location in that. Building and they would not need Planning and Zoning Commission approval. And so the purpose of this is to to try and establish those criteria. Many of the concerns related to specifics for traffic, for example, we don't know what. The commission can't say we know traffic is going to be an issue with every cannabis establishment, whether it be a cultivator, a micro cultivator, or retailer, we just know it. We can't. We can't make that leap, so what we do is we we provide the criteria by which we review the application. Traffic odor, water signage, etc., and we we go at it from a special permit. Requirement so that if. There is a spot in town which is being requested and it's deemed not appropriate because the commission feels that. They can't adequately address traffic and circulation, they can't, they do not address signage or or odor. Then you would deny that on a case by case basis. Which the special permit process gives you the flexibility to do. And there are specific. There are specific criteria within the state law related to signage and advertising and other things. Which limit what they can do and and how they can. Display things and. Related to security and distribution far beyond what we would do here.
Well, that's great.
John, I think you're muted.
Did I get muted? Sorry.
I'll start now.
Donna, would you, would you like to address the committee?
Yes, thank you for your patience, um, two things, one is I'd like to request. That the planning and zoning puts a moratorium on allowing. Any of these businesses in town until you've had a chance to finalize the regulations. So should there be a vacant? Retail location now. Or one becomes vacant while you're working on this that. No one can enter until you finalized it. And the other is I'd like to see the distance increased. Especially the five hundred feet from. A daycare facility seems very low. Um, I think that the distances. Should be the same and maybe make them up to fifteen hundred feet without looking at the map, I don't know if that's reasonable. But at least make it. The same. To be distance away from a school, a childcare provider, I believe you also said church. So that. There's no confusion. About what's going on, thank you.
Okay, would any other member of the public like to speak at this time? Any other member of the public wish to speak? Going three times, any other public member of the public wish to speak at this time? Okay. Mike, should we continue this to our next meeting, or do we want to have a vote on this tonight, or would we rather do that when Walter's back in town?
So from my perspective, if there's specific changes or information you'd like for me to provide or contemplate or or dig into. Then I'm happy to, you know, if you give me those thoughts and feedback, I'm happy to try to. You know, come up with something for the for the next meeting.
Okay, why don't, why don't we take under advisement that there seems to be a fervent wish amongst people speaking tonight that we increase the. Buffer zone. So why don't we take that under consideration and come back to it at our next meeting?
So, okay, and and. I can. I can do some digging into some of the other stuff in response to the other comments that we've made, so I just, you guys would just need to make a motion to. Continue the public hearing to the next regular meeting.
Okay, can we have a motion, please?
So.
Backing, back be moved, can we have a second?
I'll second, this is Joe.
Okay, all in favor of continuing this to our next meeting? Signify by saying aye, aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on, item E, new business, Mike, do we have any new business?
We do not.
That was easy. Item F, unfinished business, Mike, have we got any unfinished business?
We do not.
That was easy too. Approval of minutes, has everybody had a chance to read the minutes from June seventh?
I have, I have, I have a correction or an addition, if you would. For the June seventh. Minutes, Kathy De Murray's. Had some a list of questions and concerns that she posed. And those weren't listed as well as. Her address of forty eight Mason Road was not included in that, I'd like to have. Her full name and address and the list of questions and concerns that she posed to us at that time, please.
Okay, so Mike, can you get? Peggy to to redo the minutes with with that in mind from the tape of last June seventh?
Yeah, well, luckily, Chris is here and he does the minutes, we we can, yeah, we can look at the the tape. And if we can, if we can capture them, sometimes with the recording, it's hard to do them verbatim, but. The other thing we can probably do is is post the link to the recording. Which is online in the minutes so that people can watch. Directly if we aren't, but we should be able to. Adjust.
Okay, then then we'll postpone approval of the minutes until our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Item H correspondence, do we have any new correspondence, Mike?
No new correspondence.
That was easy. Item I, public comment, the commission will hear brief comments at this time from anyone wishing to speak. No business can be conducted here, nor can any comments be made about any items on the agenda. I see a couple of people with their hands up, Sarah Rice.
Hi, Sarah Reese, fifteen Penn Crest Road. I just wanted to state that I was extremely disappointed and concerned that we're dismissing the fact. That the company proposing to build what looks like what I'm assuming is a logistical site because.
I'm sorry, I have to interrupt, I think you're talking about PZ twenty two dash ten.
I'm. I'm talking about an individual going to people's houses.
This was in relation to PZ twenty two dash ten.
I mean, the guy jumped on and off so quick, I wasn't aware that we were able to comment on him.
Well, we we didn't open that to public comment because there's a continuance.
Okay, I would like to address my concerns about an individual showing up at people's houses.
I I understand you you have concerns, but but you you can't make comments in this section on things that are on the agenda. And that was on the agenda. You can certainly bring that up at the next public hearing. When we open it to public comment. With that same applicant, and that'll be on July twenty first.
And if I could just jump in in. Part of the purpose for the meeting that the that applicant. Indicated is tentatively scheduled to have to be held with EDC. Is to address some of the concerns related to what you were getting into, they're not part of the. What the purview of the PZC here, but it's a recognized concern that a number of people have, and so the purpose of. Their meeting outside of this commission, you know, basically hosted by the EDC. Is so that a lot of those comments and concerns can be directed to them and people can speak. You know, directly, so I would look for notice of that meeting, like I said, it's tentatively set for July thirteenth. And you can, you can absolutely convey those directly to the the applicant's team via the EDC.
Thanks, Mike, I'm just still disappointed that the. The Planning and Zoning Commission hasn't addressed the issues that many of the members of the community have brought up. So, but thanks.
Okay, James Marshall.
Hi, guys, thanks for remembering me, James Marshall, forty six Fisher Hill Road. This is a question about the, I had a question for the. Zoning Commission about the. Strategic, the newly enacted amendments of the zoning ordinance related to the strategic development zone. So procedurally, just a question through the proactive application process. There's a public hearing related to a zoning change. Do applicants following that? Initial. Public hearing, is there any further public hearing related to the specific merits of the special permit application that follows? Meaning, is there a second? Public hearing opportunity? When they officially submit for a special permit application, because the flow chart you guys have or have. Created on the amendment. Makes no mention, it does specifically make make mention that the public hearing is for the zone change only, but does not make mention of a second. Public hearing prior to project construction. I'm just looking.
I see Mike nodding his head, so I'll I'll let Mike answer your question.
So. For this specific. Pathway, if you will, that that you reference. There is a public hearing on the zone change, which is which is essentially the same as the standard zone change process, the difference with the SDZ. Is that it requires the submission of a concept plan, a standard zone change, which which would happen normally does not require that. Essentially, the applicant is required through the SDZ to indicate the proposed use, wherein the traditional process they're not required to. We would then, if that step is approved. They would subsequently come back to the commission phrase on that side, I believe we're talking, you you referenced the proactive side. They would then come back with a one hundred percent. Site design, so they've gone from concept plan to full site plan. And that is reviewed via a special permit. So that includes the same criteria, it includes letters to a butters, it includes a public hearing, includes includes signs posted on the property. So the. The last step in the process includes a hearing.
Thank you, I appreciated that, that clarifies that, so one, two additional questions, if you can humor me, are. During a public hearing, are residents allowed to show visuals in a Zoom meeting? Format? Meeting.
Can I just interrupt, somebody started screen sharing? Please turn screen sharing off.
So, well, that relates to my question, are we allowed to do that? As part of a public hearing and public comment period, it's not me, so I can't. Fix this.
I believe it's Leslie Latander.
I don't know.
Started screen sharing. There's a green button in the middle of the menu with the bottom of your screen, this is share screen. Okay, thank you, Mike.
So it's physically possible, but is it? Is it allowed by? You know, by the regulation or by the public hearing? Rules, I guess is my question.
I believe so, but I'm not certain, Mike, can we allow the public to do screen shares during one of our meetings and our hybrid meetings?
So. During the, during a public hearing, things that are going to be shared on the screen. As part of a public hearing item, we typically receive ahead of time and become part of the. The packet which is submitted to the commission and posted online. So had the application gone forward earlier today, they would have shown things that they had submitted as part of that. If a member of the public felt like they wanted to display something, I think that the best. Approach would be for them to provide that to us prior to, so it would become part of the record. There are people that are attending via phone only, and so for those people to have those accommodations. They would need some of that time to be able to. Sort of be aware that that was happening.
Okay, excellent, is there any date ahead of any meeting agenda that you'd need? Items for consideration?
Once the public hearing is opened, anything that's submitted to us is part of the record. So. You know, once that happens, it would be included and and anybody else could could see it.
So it has. Sorry, it has to happen during the public hearing, not ahead of the public hearing announcement, meaning. You know, if somebody wanted to share something, it would have to be presented to you sidebar during said public hearing.
No, so like, for example, there were a couple of folks that that earlier this evening emailed me a comment letter, and so when the public hearing is opened. That those that information will be provided to the commission as part of the record as documents for their consideration. So if you had something that you wanted to provide, you could send it to the town and and we would include it as part of the record.
But not able to be shared with. Anybody related to the public hearing or the subject of discussion. Meaning it's not. Yeah, I think you get where I'm going with this, but.
I'm not sure I do, if the public hearing is open, you are more than welcome to submit written testimony. And people have done that with previous applications, so you could certainly.
And if it's not written, if it's not written testimony. What if it's supporting visuals for potential impact of a proposed project, for example?
I I think what I would say is if you want to provide anything visual, you should, you should. I I think what I would say is if you want to provide anything visual, you should you should provide it prior to so it can be included in the public hearing record.
Okay, so again, my question is how far in advance of the public hearing opening, do you need that information so it could be provided?
Seventy-two.
All right, so a couple of days ahead of time, just I'm just trying to get an understanding. So, you know, it's not um missed out.
Yeah, Chairman, this is Andy Mark. I know like in our, you know, in a normal public hearing, we're meeting in person, people can submit things and then we will, we we would hold up pictures, you know, we'd hold them up to the crowd. Uh, we would read a letter into the into the public hearing. We would take a few minutes to to just incorporate that. I I think that the control should remain with the chairman about what gets distributed rather than having everybody just throwing up screenshots. I think that could become very confusing. And it would be very difficult to manage a virtual hearing if every, I mean, when there's this, you know, 75 people were here, we heard about from about eight of them. So, you know, 65 people were silent on this subject. So but if to have the ability to just broadcast visuals without some sort of pre-screening, I think not that we want to restrict the public's comments because they're very valuable, and that's exactly what these public hearings are all about. Uh, but I think the control has to remain with the commission. That's my thought.
That's appreciated.
Screen, screen sharing willy-nilly doesn't, uh, I I don't think that that would really make sense because we have to also worry about the providence of of anything that someone's sharing with us. You know, is it accurate like Andy said?
Yeah, I'm just trying to determine the mechanism in a virtual hearing versus, well, you know, the procedure would be in a public, you know, an open public meeting, since these are all virtual for some reason. Okay, thank you. I appreciate the feedback, guys.
Okay, Lindsey Dykum?
Hi, Lindsey Dykum, 44 Old River Road. Um, just wanted to see if there's a potential for any change in venue for the next meeting. Zoom has it limited to 100 participants? So some of us missed the very beginning of the meeting, which is my main reason for attending.
Okay, um, I believe we're going to go to hybrid meetings uh sometime soon, so there will be uh meetings in town hall. Mike, am I correct?
Yeah, because the these applications had have basically been noticed as virtual. And that coupled with capacity, which is, we basically said that once we got through, we would go to hybrid.
Okay, thank you. Um, I mean, I go ahead.
Good.
There are other digital venues out there. I have kids that have attended EOS Smith. They've done live YouTube um where people can still participate as well. It's just immediately um barring anybody more than 100 people from participating in the public hearing itself. So we can't see, view, or comment on anything.
Really?
Yeah, it won't even let you
Is that the case? It's limited to 100 people?
Yeah, thousands of it.
I, yeah, um, I, we have a, like a business level subscription, so we were letting, I was letting people in as they were coming. So there shouldn't have been any issues with people not being allowed to enter because the capacity is beyond 100.
Okay, because I can tell you firsthand that I was not allowed to enter the meeting and miss the first four minutes, so I didn't even get to see where that the first application was being um pushed out. Um, because it said, I got a notification that there was already 100 people in attendance and was not allowed to enter the meeting.
All right, Mike, if you could look into that, that shouldn't have happened.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I I had a similar issue. I don't, I don't know if it was just a bunch of people trying to
I'm sorry. Oh, okay. So somebody else had a similar issue, Mike?
Yeah, this is Joe Hall.
Oh, hi, Joe. Okay, Paul Carbono would like to speak. Hi, Paul. Thanks for your patience.
Hi, Paul Carbono, 430 Veru. Are you hearing me okay?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. It's my first time on Zoom. I'm not great about this stuff. I just want to clarify that the July 19th discussion of the postponement that was from tonight will be hybrid. Uh, is that correct? Uh, this is the second time I've come to Wyndham. I don't have access to do this in my home. I've traveled twice to do this. It's twice it's been postponed. I'm irritated by the whole situation began with, and I are threatening me more by pushing me off to Willimantic to do these things twice, and it's been postponed.
Um, yes, as far as I know, it'll be a hybrid meeting on July 19th, so you'll be able to attend by Zoom.
Thank you.
Rosa?
Hi, I'm Rosalina Chinchia, and I'm, I live at 5 Common Road in Wellington, and I have, I have just three quick questions about procedure moving forward. Uh, so what about the meeting of the 5th? Can we speak to this item because it will not be on the agenda at that time?
Can you speak to PZ 22 dash 10? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
On July 5th?
On July 5th.
During the public comment period?
Yes.
Um, it does say under the public comment, no business can be conducted here. So I don't know what it is you'd like to speak about, but we can't discuss business.
I see, I see. So we can't, so that's, so that it wouldn't be. And then um I just want to clarify this for everyone. So the the first item on the agenda for today was strictly
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you can't speak to agenda items at this time.
No, I know. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not speaking to the agenda. I'm just, I just want to clarify that it was a zoning issue only. So should our arguments on in the in the future, in the night, on the 19th? Can, should they be strictly about zoning concerns?
Under PZ 22 dash 10, when you come back on the 19th, it is for a zone change.
Right.
So, yes, you should limit your questions, I believe, to the zoning change. Am I right, Mike?
Right, the application that was continued was just a zone change. So the comments for the public hearing will occur at the second meeting in July on the zone change portion.
And my final question is so in the end, the decision will be made by the five of you?
Yes, but the commission decides.
As a simple majority?
Yes.
Okay.
As long as we have a quorum. Right, we can't conduct business without a quorum.
Right, okay.
Okay. Are you all set, Rosa? Uh, we have Emma, we should just speak.
Hi, this is Mary Young of 16 Angela Lane um in Wellington. Um, and I just had a question. Does Wellington have a comprehensive plan in place? And when was it last revised? And when, where can I see a copy of it?
Mike, can I defer to you on that? We do have uh some kind of a comprehensive plan for growth, do we not?
We have the plan, conservation and development. Is that?
Yep, and it was most recently adopted um in 2018.
It's at the town website.
It is.
It's available at the town website, Mary.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay. Ralph?
Okay, um Ralph Tillis, 47 Village Hill Road. I'm going to speak to uh the traditional approach to a zone change, and I would suggest that the commission start at 12 dot 03 dot 02 dot 05, which does require a preliminary site development plan and land use concept plan. Mike was making the statement that the traditional approach did not. And that's not quite true. With respect to the approval of a zone change, it requires a majority of the commission, not the majority of the people present. So you may have a quorum, but you'll still need affirmative votes by a majority of the commission. So it's something to keep in mind.
Okay, thanks, Ralph. And Nick?
Nicholas Tella, 49 Myrtle. So I had concern that uh Mr. Marshall wasn't able to provide uh what he had to show. So how do I know I can get that information unfiltered from you guys? Like whatever he has to share? How do I know I'm going to receive the whole version and not filtered?
Um, I believe that we would link it to the agenda, whatever's what whatever would be submitted to us, we would link to the agenda. Correct, Mike?
Correct, yep.
Okay, in the past, I've seen things altered and uh filtered, that's why.
I don't know. I I I'm not familiar with any uh alterations that we've ever done. Okay, James?
Hi, guys. Thanks again. Uh, James Marshall, 46 Fisher Hill Row. Um, just a follow-up question related to procedure for the proactive process of the uh special development zone. The public hearing is related to a zone change only, but this amendment to the zoning ordinance is essentially um a a process or a mechanism for a entity um to push through a a spot change in a zoning ordinance for a particular project. So in the public hearing for that zone change only, to what degree is the merits of the particular project factored into that zone change decision by the zoning board? Meaning you know, the 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 argument being put forth for the zone change is related to a specific project. So I know the merits, you know, to what degree do the merits of the particular project get factored into that zone change decision by the board is my question.
Well, I believe it's always on a case-by-case basis as far as, you know, weighing the merits of any application.
So discussion related to the zone change can relate to the merits of the particular project that at hand, correct, and the appropriateness um of any documentation? You know, whether proposed plan as a whole, meaning we're not just talking about an individual property in the hypothetical. It is specific to a particular project and the project's merits are weighed in as part of the decision on the zone change by the zoning board.
I believe so, Mike. Uh, I would ask you for ask to be current.
So I would say that the application includes a concept level plan, which has a proposed layout approximate site design, et cetera. And so to the extent that those general high-level criteria folks want to make comments on, certainly that would be something that that could be included. But with the understanding that this is a 30% design, anything that is subject to change when the 100% site design comes forward is is all part of the, that is why there's a second public hearing. So the the discussion related to the use and layout of the site, those granular details are are best kept for the special permit when the site is 100% designed.
Understood, but to a degree, I mean, what is the relevance of a conceptual level plan that is subject to change in the decision-making process related to a zone change? We're approving something in a hypothetical that can change completely from this very preliminary and concept level plan to a fully fleshed-out idea, or a 70% level that would be approved by a traditional process where there's an understanding and a higher due diligence requirement. So, you know, there's merits for a particular project, but it it's essentially just a hypothetical situation. So we're proving a hypothetical for an application for a specific project is the way it reads to me. So I I hope, you know, there's more impact related to the weight of a particular project and any decision that this board makes related to a zone change application through the proactive special development, development zone process. So I don't know if that needs a response. That's, it's, you know, at this point, it's just a statement. So, thank you for your time.
Okay. All right, thank you, James. And does any other member of the public wish to speak at this time? Any other member of the public wish to speak? Any other member of the public wish to speak at this time? Okay, I think we'll move on from public comment. Um, item J, staff report and discussion. Mike, do we have anything in this section tonight?
We don't.
Okay, that was pretty easy, too. Uh, can we have a motion to adjourn, please? So Becky and Bob tied. Bob, you seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye, aye. All opposed? We're all out of here. So, thank you, everybody for attending. Uh, for those of you that don't normally attend PZC meetings, please continue to attend in the future. Uh, democracy uh works best when we're all in it. Thank you.